So why run for school board? I'm not gonna read this verbatim. Board members are really critical around things that that people have a lot of emotions about. And what people have a lot of emotions about is you're often guess is money. So budgets, teacher salaries, funding programs, so on and so forth. You know, there's this line where you can always tell where somebody's sort of values are if you look at their budget. And and that's very much so the case for our public education systems as well. So board members are really critical in making those decisions. School boards are actually at the heart of school districts, as you can imagine, directly serving everyone who's got a stake, who's got skin in the game in the community, students, educators, parents, other stakeholders from a variety of backgrounds. You really get an opportunity to build relationships, build community, and really serve in the way in which that word actually means at the local level. In ways you just honestly maybe can't or don't get the same sort of treatment at at higher offices statewide, federal level, things of that nature. And locally, like the school boards, like I mentioned, sort of ties in here, local representation, local control. Folks who live in a particular area, in my opinion, are always gonna know what's best for the community, for the students, for the families in that area. And so I'm making sure that we've got folks who actually, you know, are rooted here, maybe not just moved or maybe weren't persuaded by some of these national extremist organizations. But have skin in the game in terms of kids in the district, families, homes, so on and so forth. So kind of the best way to be locally involved. I think. Next slide. Why run for school board? School board races are the most important races in the entire country. And I was telling you that, whoa, there's, you know, we're gonna vote on who occupies sixteen hundred Pennsylvania Avenue next year. And that's important, but it's as important as as school board races, largely because the day to day impact. Particularly if you've got kids in a school or a school district is much more tangible from your for for who's representing you on a school board as opposed to 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 what our old curmudgeons do in the White House. It takes a little bit longer for that impact to be felt. The day to day sort of overall safety, sense of value, education, social emotional support, learning, all that good stuff, things that tangibly impact. How you live, how your families live. School board members have an incredible obligation, responsibility, impact on that. In ways our statewide and federal office holders, as important as they are, just don't carry that same day to day magnitude. And so low street districts also, as you all know, are under attack. They are becoming the battleground for our extremist sort of organizations for our culture wars. But great school boards, on the flip side of that, are really first lines of defense. And great school boards mean you gotta have great school board members on them. And they've been really solid sort of first barriers, lines of defense to extremists, to organizations coming in and trying to spend money to 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 muck up what's happening in our schools and our classrooms and so on and so forth. The last one is cliches, but some cliches are true. Every child in the state just deserves a high quality public education in their neighborhood, public school, period. And and I think that's one of the reasons, I'm actually glad we included this. I'm glad this is one of our sort of North Stars and Guiding Lights. Because sometimes we forget that it's about the kids and it's about their development and their education and their preparedness for the world. And so being a great equity minded school member in a school district is a way to really serve Arizona children in a way that not many other offices gives you the opportunity to do. Excellent, please. Are you eligible to run? This is key. Sort of bullet point thing you gotta go through. Unfortunately, every time we've come on here, there's at least one person who's realized that they're not eligible to run for school board. So I hope this does not disqualify anyone here to run for school board. Number one, you gotta be a registered Arizona voter. So I know a lot of great people here are from here and a lot of great people here are not from here. Gotta be registered Arizona voter. Can't be registered in Georgia, can't be registered in any other other states. Just talking to myself. I'm in the process of changing that. Gotta be registered in Arizona. So that's number one. Number two, you gotta be a resident of the school district for at least one year prior to Election Day. Election Day next year is on November fifth. So just to make sure that you're good and above reproach, if you plan on, you know, getting a new house, getting new mortgage, you probably wanna do that and make sure you close by November fourth. Don't pick, you know, no, I'm kidding. But you do want to that that to be wherever you are running, wherever you wanna run. Make sure you're there and you're a resident there one year prior to November fifth. The last one is tricky. You cannot be an employee of the school district or a spouse of an employee. And that includes third party contractors who provide certified or classified services to the district. I won't get into the nuances of that last part, because I don't know particularly, I'll be honest, sort of what the specifics are. But I will highlight, you can't be an employer of the school district and your spouse can't be an employee of that district as well. That has disqualified some folks in the past. And so if you check those three boxes, great, we're good to go. Let's let's get you connected with your LD and signed up. If not, we definitely wanna figure out some ways, some other ways you can get involved in this good stuff. I'm gonna turn it over to Nikki to talk more specifics about key information, what you'll do once you win and all that good stuff.
All right, so you're eligible to run. You ran a wonderful race. Now what's gonna happen after you win? This is gonna, these couple of slides are gonna give you a little bit of a glimpse into what it's gonna look like to serve your local public school. I will say, this is not exhaustive. There is a lot that goes into this work. And and we will be with you every step of the way, but we could never prepare you for all the aspects of serving on your local public school district board. So you can plan to meet at least once a month. Oftentimes, that's gonna be more frequent, depending on what's going on in your district. You'll often hear that districts are calling special meetings around topics they're tackling in their community. That could be curriculum. That could be budget conversations, that could be school issues, campus visits, campus sites. Things like that kind of add to that schedule a little bit. Post COVID, we've seen this quite a bit. School board members can attend virtually if needed. That's a really great option. If if it means you're gonna miss a meeting or maybe call in, please utilize that. But remember that attendance at your local school district governing board meeting is very, very important. Because you will have people from your community attending. You will kind of get to see those faces, know who's coming to speak at your board meetings, know who the parents, teachers, community members are. So you wanna make sure you're there as frequently as you possibly can be. Prep is required for these meetings. I love that Marcus brought this up. I watch a lot of school board meetings. I I actually attended school board meetings three years ago before it was a thing and nobody was at our meetings then. And I could tell when school board members were not prepared for the meeting. They had not looked at the materials ahead of time. They didn't understand the topics that were being discussed. So make sure when you're scheduling out your time as a school board member, that you really give time to look at those materials that come in. Our school districts are extremely accountable to taxpayers here in Arizona around policy and spending. And so you, as a school board member, are going to see all of those those dollars down to the penny, down to the pencil, we like to say. That's being purchased in that local public school and along with the policy as well. So all those decisions happen in open public meetings. And you'll get access to all of that, so you can prep accordingly and make sure you're ready to have those conversations. This position is unpaid, so keep that in mind when you're planning, whether or not this is something you can fit into your life and and how you manage that. Although some members may be reimbursed for some expenses around trainings or other business, business dealings. Keep this in mind when you look at attending trainings if you're elected. And they say, you know, you should go to this training. Ask the district if it's covered. Ask what the travel looks like. See if if that's one of those expenses that they can help you cover as a governing board member. All right, so all the terms last for four years unless you're filling in for somebody's vacancy. So if somebody leaves halfway through their role and and you're appointed or you're elected to finish out their term. Everything else is gonna be a four year cycle. So keep that in mind when you run. This is a commitment of four years. You must reside within the district for the entirety of your term. This is also something we want all our candidates to keep in mind. If you run and you win and then you end up moving or being unable to serve, the county superintendent appoints your replacement. And that really does circumvent the voice of our voters. Voters should be allowed to elect their local school district members. And when an appointment happens, obviously, that's not the voter's will there because there is no election possible in that moment. So make sure you look at this as a long term commitment and understand how important that is for your local community to really have a say in who's sitting on those those boards. So what are you gonna do as a school board member? Keep in mind, I said, we're not gonna go over everything, but this is quite a bit. Some big topics around our community will be covered within your governing board meetings. So hiring and evaluating your superintendent, obviously, that's key. That is the leader of your district. That's your top educator. It's a very important role for our teachers and our parents to really find someone who represents our values and and looks for those opportunities to support students and staff through this through this journey. You're also gonna provide guidance in the development and approval of your district budget. As we know, here in Arizona, these budgets are very tight. Our legislature has really cut funding into our public schools. And so these conversations can be very, very serious and difficult to have at times because you are making decisions about where resources will go when resources are very, very limited here. So keep that in mind. You will also monitor that budget and make sure you're staying on track to where you wanna be. As I've said, and I will continue to say, school districts are extremely accountable for every penny that is spent of these taxpayer dollars. And so you're going to see a lot of documentation of where your schools are spending their money. And you're gonna be able to monitor that and make sure you're on track to finish the year and do everything you can to support students in those buildings. You also set salaries for employees. We know that teachers pay here in Arizona has been low for a very, very long time. Again, courtesy of our legislature, those resources are not available. And so when you're looking at those salaries for employees, you really wanna make sure you're getting all of the information you can. And you have access to all of that that prep work that needs to be done before your board meeting to set those salaries for these employees. You're also gonna approve purchases. And when I say they do it down to the pencil, I am not kidding. You will see all of those purchase orders that come through for the supplies our educators are using for our kids. So that's enough right there. Just kidding, that's only a small piece. Here we go with some other things you will do. Some big policy comes out of our local school districts, right? If you're a parent or a teacher, you know they've made decisions that impact your kids or your job. That goes from district policies across the board and into every campus. That goes for curriculum, which is always kind of a big decision and usually involves a committee that you're working with to get advice on those curriculum choices. I served on the calendar committee and I always joke, that was like a nightmare committee for me. It is a heated debate around the calendar. You would think it was a very easy thing to do. Evidently, it is not. The calendar committee is where the drama lives in your school district. So look for that process also to play out in a little committee of of stakeholders. Yeah, Jen's funny, because calendar committees, you would have never guessed that those were so serious, but let me tell you. People's vacations matter and they take it very seriously and they wanna know how that school year is gonna go. Closing or constructing schools, these are difficult conversations at times. School closures can be super impactful for a lot of vulnerable communities. I have raised my family in rural communities and we've dealt with a lot of school closures that had very serious ramifications for the neighborhoods around them. So those are difficult conversations that you've gotta be prepared to have. And again, as Marcus kind of referenced, maintain your values when those conversations are happening. You know, school closures happen. It's you're never gonna be able to avoid the possibility of any school ever closing. But you do have the opportunity to weigh in and say, this is super impactful for this community. Have we looked at everything this means? In the event that we have to close a school and and not have that neighborhood, community, school access. Constructing schools is typically a little bit more exciting. That's probably the better of these two. You know, building new schools to meet the growing populations of your district is a little bit more hopeful than having to, of course, close those down and 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 not have that access for some of these communities. So that is part of part of the job here as a governing board member. All right, I think, am I handing this off to Claire now? I don't know the numbers of the slides. You know Nikki. She never knows what's going on, but I think I am.
I think you are too. This one gets funky, but I can happily take over here. So thank you, Nikki, Fred, Marcus, everyone who's presented so far. For those who missed the entrance, my name's Claire Knight and I'm the political director with Arizona List. I will give this caveat before I get in too deep, but we specifically work with pro-choice Democratic women. I love seeing pro-public education men running, but unfortunately, our organization does not work with you. So I will just say that before I offer resources and things like that. But first steps, I'm gonna be talking about campaigning. Nikki and Fred have gotten you excited about running for school board. You know what it entails. You're ready to do it. So how do we win this election? So number one is really making sure that you are set on that decision. Like Nikki talked about, there is a lot of work that goes into being a school board member. You may decide that you don't want to do that work. You may be in a school district that has really fun and exciting meetings with lots and lots of public comment that get very heated, and you may not wanna be the person who responds to that. Learn that before you file your papers and are elected. So attend meetings. Talk to people who are involved with the school board. Talk to people who attend every meeting. Meet with the people who are impacted by these decisions. This is a couple of ways that you can start to do that. So thinking about your parent group and teachers associations. Who are those board members that you feel you would align with, people that you would vote with? Talk to them about their experience on the board. What do they like about it? What do they not like? What were their challenges to running? Reach out to organizations that can help you. If you are sitting here and you are a pro-choice Democratic woman and you have not met me yet. I'm gonna put my contact information in the chat. Please reach out. We have resources. Talk to groups like Save Our Schools, Integrity AZ, Arizona Education Association. Who you are as a candidate, think about the organizations that may support you and show up to work with you. Talk to them now. Get that support early on. Attend those board meetings, not only so that you know what you're getting into, what it looks like, what are the common topics that are talked about? What are the issues that are consistently brought up, but also so that people know who you are? They recognize you as someone who attends board meetings, who pays attention, who speaks if they have something to say. And then one of the other huge places for school board candidates that you can find support is your legislative district. These are the people who are likely to be your volunteers. People who regularly show up to LD meetings in person or on Zoom are pretty committed people. And so those folks are the people who are likely gonna show up and knock on doors. They're gonna sign your petition. They're gonna be the people who will do that extra work for you. Get to know them, figure out who those folks are. All right, next slide. So you have decided you are running for sure. Before you do anything official with your campaign, you do need to file your statement of interest. For school board candidates, this is gonna be within your county superintendent. So basically, this just says, I am running. This is who I am, the district I'm running for, the seat I'm running for. You are letting people know that you're officially running. You cannot do anything before this. And you will need this paperwork to do things like open up a bank account and start filing signatures. So we do have a link in here to some of those specific statements of interest, but that will be your county superintendent. All right, next. Yep, so gathering signatures. In order to get on the ballot, there's a little bit of a hurdle. We ask you to do some work to prove that you've got some people who are gonna support you. So this depends on your district. Everything I talked about today is really gonna widely vary on what your district looks like, the size and the makeup. But you're gonna need a percentage of the last election of registered voters in your district who are saying, hey, I'll vote for you. So you always wanna collect more than necessary because we have some specific requirements for these folks. If you have ever helped to collect signatures, either for an initiative, some petition or another candidate, you know that we have a lot of rules. So we recommend that you get more than the minimum. Right now, they have not yet released the numbers of signatures that will be needed for this cycle, but know that that should come in January. You should be able to see the past minimums and maximums for your district to give you an idea of where that's out. Again, somewhere between ten and four hundred. These signatures will be due. You have a month window in June and July of next year. Signatures, there are a number of ways that you can collect them. There are a number of tips and tricks and there are a number of things that get you, can get you stuck up. We have an entire training just about signatures with the ADLCC on November ninth. This is open to anyone and everyone. It'll be in Tucson and on Zoom. I'll make sure that that mobilize gets to you all in the follow up. But know if signatures are like, ooh, this feels like something I need more information on, please attend this training. We have about an hour and a half just on signatures. So let's talk about what those forms actually look like on the next slide. So filling out the page, this is what it looks like. This is what you'll be filling out. So you're gonna have to fill out your county, what office you're running for, your name, your address. And then really specific what election you are running for. So as a school board candidate, you do not go on the primary ballot because your race is nonpartisan and scheduled at the general. There are other rules and other people fall under different nonpartisan rules with our municipal folks, but this means that you are submitting signatures for the general election. So sometimes you have to fill out specific paperwork about when your election is. And yours is the general, which is November fifth, twenty twenty four as a school board candidate. This is again why you have a little bit of a later signature date than legislative candidates, most of our municipal folks and county candidates as well. So next slide. So fundraising. We've gotten our signatures. We've made it onto the ballot. In order to do a lot of the things that you may wanna do as a candidate in order to win your race, you may have to do some fundraising. It is a necessary evil in order to do the things we wanna do. So school board candidates are really, again, depending upon your race and the size of your district, really wide variety of what this spending may look like. I have worked with candidates who have spent five hundred dollars to win their elections. And I've worked with folks in really large districts and competitive races that have spent, raised about twenty five thousand. These are gonna be explicitly used to further your campaign and nothing else. So support and supplies for your volunteers. Papers to leave at doors or some literature to leave when you knock on those doors. Maybe some yard signs or street signs to talk to folks, a mailer or some digital ads, but this is going explicitly just to your campaign. Now, I know that we have a lot of folks in this room who are, this is your first time thinking about running for office. Fundraising tends to be that really scary part. Talk to people a lot who are like, I would rather stick hot pokers in my eyes than call someone I don't know and ask them for money. That sounds terrifying. Please don't make me do it. Maybe I don't need to run for office. I promise you, it's not that scary. If this is your one barrier for running for office, I'm gonna tell you one thing that I hope changes that. You are not asking money for yourself. You are fundraising to make a change in your community. You don't get to spend that money on a new purse or towards your car payment or something you wanna do. It goes directly towards making a change in your community by winning your school board election and being on that governing board. Thinking about fundraising through that lens can make it easier, but know that there are resources that can help. There are people who are around to help that know that running in a school board race is hard. In a year like twenty twenty four, where there is going to be a lot of noise in Arizona and a lot of people fundraising. Knowing how to break through that can be hard. So talk to others. Talk to other candidates who have run before. Talk to candidates on different levels about what has worked. One really important thing that I wanna note about fundraising is that you have a very specific and hard barrier that you need to abide by. So if you raise and spend, this is combined, so you could raise eight hundred but only spend six hundred, fourteen hundred. That is the limit for you school board members. You have to file paperwork. If you stay under that amount, you do not need to file any paperwork. Do not let that be the only reason that you choose not to fundraise or spend money, because you don't wanna do paperwork. But this paperwork is important. This makes sure that campaign funds are being spent appropriately, that you are fundraising appropriately. We have folks at the state party who do trainings on treasures, reports and how to do it. My note here, my big one, that if you've ever taken a finance training with me before, you have heard FEC jail is real jail. We have seen this play out on the federal level recently. It is not a fun, separate little jail that you go to. It is real prison. Please take these rules seriously. The Secretary of State and our Attorney General do. These are serious laws. There are real consequences. Please follow the laws when it comes to campaign finance. So all right, moving on from that one, don't mean to scare you on that one too much, but we've raised some money, we've gotten on the ballot. Now we get to do my actual favorite part, the campaigning portion of campaigning. So these first things are what I like to call our extra bonus and fun things. So number one is our kitchen cabinet. These are gonna be the people who are your key supporters. These don't have to be people who have worked on campaigns for years. These don't have to be people who know everything about everything. But these are gonna be the people that you meet with maybe once a month to say, hey, this is what we're doing. Am I missing something? Is something not happening? Is there more we need to be doing? Where can you all help and fill in? These are gonna be the people that you ask those tough questions of. The people that you feel comfortable asking really honest and hard questions and saying, I don't know what I'm doing right now. Can you help? These are gonna be your core circle. We just like to call them a kitchen cabinet and give them a nice and fun name. But think of these as the people that you lean on, especially as a school board candidate who is probably not hiring any staff. You're gonna be asking people to volunteer for you a lot. And having those people that you know are gonna be consistent and reliable helps. Having social media is crucial. This is not always the most important thing in your mind. But recognize that this is where a lot of voters are getting information. And we wanna make sure that you are accessible where voters are going first. That means when they get their ballot, they're gonna look everyone up on Facebook. Should have a page with just some basic information. Who are you? Why are you running? What are some of the things you support? If you already have a following on social media, turning that into support for your campaign. Those people live out of state or out of district, they can make calls, donate, send text messages. If they live nearby. How many of those people can we get to actually physically knock on doors for you should be your goal of social media. But using this as a place to have information about you, recognizing that a lot of our younger voters are not always reachable in the typical senses. I will be so honest with you all as a twenty five year old, do not live at the address I'm registered to vote at. I don't answer my phone if I don't know the number. It's really hard to reach me if you are a candidate that doesn't already have that. But you know what I do? I look at websites. I look at candidate social media to see where do you stand on things? Okay, you put out some issue statements. What are they? What are the issues you care about? Are you knocking on doors? Are you doing anything? This is for a lot of younger folks where they are getting that political engagement. With that is your website. This is another great place to put all of that information that we do not have time to tell people. When you're at someone's door, talking to them, we don't get to give them your full life story and every issue you care about and every single thing you hope to do. We put that on our website for them to look at if they do have those questions. This is where you get to outline really, who are you? Why do you care about this? What are those issues that you're focused on? Having some photos or written posts from you, videos about why you're doing this, getting people engaged. Number one with your website is you should make it as easy as humanly possible for people to help you. Which means that there should be a donate and volunteer button on every single page and they should be usable and easy. Shouldn't have to click twelve pages to give you ten dollars. I will get lost and never give you that ten dollars. So again, we wanna make it as easy as possible. We can do that online. And then my last one is all of the fun extra things like yard signs, street signs, t-shirts, hats, buttons, pens. These are fun and nice to haves. These are not necessary though. These are nice to haves. I will say it again, and they are not direct voter contact. If you have the budget for it, these things are great. Yard signs can be a good community building tool. Oh, my neighbor supports that school board candidate. I wasn't even gonna vote for school board. I guess I'll vote for them because I trust my neighbor. Outside of that, these things are nice bonuses for our volunteers, but don't always actually serve the purpose of getting us votes. What really does that is direct voter contact. So next slide. This is what you should be spending the bulk of your time on, these items, which is direct voter contact. I would love to get to talk to every single registered voter and talk to people who are not registered voters and get them registered. But we don't have that time. There are two really precious and priceless resources in your campaign, and they are time and treasure. Where volunteers and your time, we have to use wisely because Election Day is coming, whether or not we like it. A year sounds like a ton of time, but it is not enough time to talk to every voter in your district. So we do direct targeted voter contact, which means we figure out who are the voters that are likely to support you. You may be running in a really democratic district where you just need to let people know that you are a Democrat and a pro education candidate that is gonna work for them. You may be running in a very purple or red area where you just need to talk about issues. You need to talk to independents, Republicans and Dems who are maybe a little squishy. But figuring out who are your voters? Who are those people that need to hear from you that maybe weren't gonna vote for school board, weren't gonna vote, or were maybe gonna vote differently in your race? So these are some of the ways that we reach out to them. Flyers and postcards are a great way to put information that you don't have to say. You all are hearing me. I am a quick speaker. Not everyone is. Some of you need some more time to get out all of those words. We don't always have it. Putting it on paper helps, making it shiny and pretty and glossy. You may wanna work with some consultants or a designer if you know that that is not in your wheelhouse. There are many folks who understand working with smaller races who can scale their funding and pricing. Please reach out to some of us who are doing this presenting. We know those people. We are happy to help connect you with. I just need a graphic designer who can create one little flyer for me, things like that. You cannot do this alone. So you need to do some volunteer and organizing work. Recruiting your friends who have never knocked on a single door and saying, it's really not that scary. I'd go with you. Talking to those people in your LD and other organizations and saying, my race is important and I need volunteers. Can you come help? But bringing those folks back in so that they can not only collect signatures for you, but talk to voters, send calls, do all of that work and that help. So one last thing that I wanna talk about here is targeted digital ads. As a school board candidate, again, we're working on some smaller budgets, smaller races sometimes. And it can be really hard to figure out where to spend our money and what makes the most sense. Digital ads, using either Google searches, some specific social medias that we can track with voter data. Which means that sometimes when you get Facebook ads, it's which means that sometimes when you get Facebook ads, it's because you live in your LD and are a likely voter. They're really good at targeting that. We can spend a small amount of money and reach a lot of people. So one of the biggest ways that I like to think about this is search engine optimization. If someone is Googling your school district around election day, we can make sure that your website shows up first. Someone is Googling your opponents around election day or just the city you live in. Making sure that they're like, oh, well, I'm just going to click on the first link and, oh, it's a school board candidate. I didn't even think about that race. I wasn't even looking for that person or I just wanted to know what district I'm in and one of the candidates popped up. So you want to be creative. Think about how you can reach folks and know that you are always going to be best at knowing your own community. So you know, if you have people that you're like, oh, those people don't answer their doors. Those people all have gates. You can't get into that neighborhood. You know that. How else can we reach them? If you have a large population of non-English speakers, how can we in a coordinated way talk to those folks with people who speak their language that can have conversations with them? Whether that be phone calls or text conversations, specific targeted canvases. Think about your community and your district and how you can best reach them. Alright, so my last note for you all, and this is a really important and specific one, is to look at your race specifically and the history of this election. Here in Arizona, if exactly enough candidates file their signatures or less than the number required, the election is canceled and the candidates are appointed as if elected. Nikki talked about this a little bit before with appointments. If someone moves or has to step down, this is an even greater source of, source of lack of representation. These voters do not even get to vote for the people that they end, that end up representing them. They often, if this goes on for long enough, don't know what school district they live in because they never see it on a ballot. No one knocks on their doors. Even seeing a yard sign that says, I live in Tucson Unified School District is more engagement than some folks are getting. Please check if you live in one of these districts. It is as simple in some of these places as having a warm body, collect signatures. That's it. But we want elections in these places. We do not have a ton of very friendly county superintendents here in Arizona, unfortunately. Which means that they get to appoint their buddies and often do, which means that we get very unfriendly school board candidates in these areas. That means that we have for four years, students, teachers, community members that are dealing with the consequences of there not being a candidate on the election. So please, take a look at your election, take a look at the districts around you. If you live next to a district and your best friend lives there, ask them to run. Think about doing some recruitment yourself if you're able to. Those of us who do that work would love you for it forever. Um, and I think that this is the end of my slide, so I will pass it back to Frederick.
Thank you, Claire. I really appreciate it and thank you again, Nikki, for um all the information. Um, we've got six minutes left and so I want to leave plenty of time for any questions or uh discussion points. I'll highlight a few things really quickly. Again, thank you all so much for being here. Um, and and uh we've said this over and over again, want to reiterate it that we're here to support you. Momentarily, I'll drop a link to my own calendar. Uh, if you want to hop on my calendar and you can find thirty minutes to talk and just high-level overview of sort of where you are with your planning, any questions you might have. Um, I really want to, would love to, part of the reasons why I'm here uh to be able to use some of that electoral experience that I've got over the past few years and and really apply it to the local level. Um, uh, so feel free to hop on my calendar. Um, next steps is we, if you've got sort of feedback for us or anything that that um you'd like to to share, feel free to to send us an email or write any other information. Um, we are going to have some future events. This is the last one that we currently have scheduled. Um, but our response has been uh pretty positive and uh it seems like there are definitely more people interested in having more information sessions. Um, so we would love to 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 have your email and be able to put you on that list uh as well. Um, so thank you all. Now it's early Sunday morning. Uh, again, want to reiterate that you could be anywhere in the world, but you're here with us. So um, I will step back and if you have any questions, feel free to either drop them in the chat. Um, or just come off mute at first and um raise your inquiry.